Are we ready?
You sure are, Madam Mayor.
This regular city council meeting is called to order July 21st, 2025 at 7:02 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Radnor.
Here.
Councilmember Crawford.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum and the gang's all here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the consent agenda. The following routine items are presented for approval without discussion as a single agenda item. Should any member wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered separately. A, regular council meeting minutes for July 7th, 2025. B, request to renew the smart municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year 2026. Request to approve payment application number one for the 2025 lawn maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Ferndale, Michigan in the amount of $29,174.51. D, request to approve payment application number one for the 2025 landscape maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Ferndale, Michigan in the amount of $28,627.25. E, request approval for special meeting of the Beautification Advisory Commission on Friday, August 1st, 2025. F, request authorization to bid 2025-26 miscellaneous concrete project M782, locations to be announced later. G, request to approve payment application number seven for the 2024 block pruning project to Lim Walkers Tree &amp; Snow LLC of Kenaki, Michigan in the amount of $3,375. H, approval of Beautification Advisory Commission meeting minutes for February 18th and April 29th. I, approval of payment application number one for the Event Hub project in the amount J, library meeting minutes for May 20th. K, new and renewal of licenses for July 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any, I don't see any visiting elected officials. So that brings us to item seven in the agenda, special recognition, special recognition and presentations, and we have Main Street America accreditation for the Oak Park Corridor Improvement Authority. And City Manager Tungate, who do we call up for that?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I would like to ask our board, our manager of authorities, Michelle Bishop, to join me to make an introduction at the podium, please.
Good evening, City Council and Madam Mayor. And City Manager Tungate, I'm Michelle Bishop, I am the Corridor Improvement Authority Manager, and tonight we have Annika Norris with Main Street Oakland County. She has come in to present the Corridor Improvement Authority with their 2025 affiliate standing award. This is an award that we are given because we are accredited with Main Street Oakland County and also Main Street America. It's an accreditation process that we go through every single year. It requires many different standards in economic development, design, promotion, and organizational, of our organization within our authority. So I'm going to bring up Annika Norris, and she'll present us with our award.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak on behalf of the Main Street program and to present the affiliate plaque to the city of Oak Park. They do a lot of work for the Main Street program, the board as well as the director. And then just kind of wanted to call your attention to two pieces of items, two items that I'll be leaving here today. One is the Main Street America annual report for '24, and then the other is a kind of little combined impact report from 2001 to current. This is our 25th anniversary with Main Street Oakland County, and it's a pretty important program. It's been going on for 25 years, and the county always makes room in their budget to keep us going. All of our funds do come from the county budget, they do not come from Michigan or Main Street America. We are able to get grants through Main Street America for our communities, and then staff goes out to get additional grants for our communities to make up and help with some things for small businesses and new programs. But within these documents, the annual reports, I think there's a couple of pretty big numbers I just wanted to point out real quick. Overall, 1.2 billion in new public and private investment in our Main Street communities since 2001, and most of the years, the stats that were taken were only from, basically, between six on up to 13 communities because we only collected from our select level of communities at that time. Now we have 29 communities that participate in the program, and when I came in to work for the county in 2018, at that point, I think we had 23 or 25. I'm not sure exactly, I can go back and figure that out, but we've grown, and now our stats are also showing all of our communities, not just the select level. I just think it's, this number is so much more significant when you realize that that's only from pretty much 13 of our select level communities. And then just a couple other stats in here. As a program, last year we were able to award $110,000 worth of grants for design services and assorted projects, and then we also gave out approximately $710,000 in design services to our communities, which is pretty huge. We have an architect on staff, he's a historic architect as well, and he does amazing work. I know that he's come and assisted in Oak Park as well with some different projects. So please look at this, take it up and see how much your Main Street community really brings to the whole community, as well as the number of jobs and overall economic, grassroots economic development that it brings. But I'd love to present the plaque to Michelle for the Oak Park CIA and keeping their standing as an affiliate program. Thank you.
Annika, Madam Mayor, if I could.
Do you want to come up for a picture?
Yes, but before we do that, could I ask a question?
First of all, I want to commend you and commend our staff for getting this designation.
I know it's not easy, it's been a long process that Kim Maroney started a long time ago, and here we are, so it's fantastic. But the question I have is, this is a, I believe Main Street Oakland County is the only accredited countywide Main Street program, correct?
Correct.
The rest of them are locally accredited.
Well, the rest of them are state.
They're state, okay.
So we're a coordinating program, so like, we have a staff of seven, John Bry is my supervisor, he's the coordinator of the program, I'm the assistant coordinator, so we coordinate all, with all 29 communities, they all have their own staff, and some go through accreditation and some don't. But typically, there's a state-run organization. I think the very interesting thing about Oakland County is, back in 2000, Michigan had been like in the program and then stepped out, Oakland County was like, this is so important, we need to do this, and we need to keep this, we need to find room in our budget for this, and so they created that first and only, still only countywide coordinating program. So it is, it's very significant, and the fact that you can have seven staff plus others at the county in your communities within, you know, basically hour and a half max at any given day is pretty awesome.
Yeah.
I love the work that the state does, but I think it's pretty cool that we can be to all 29 of our communities in one day.
Absolutely.
A few hours in that day.
Well, with that, council members, I think we should come down for a picture.
Is Benny available?
As long as Benny is available, I believe he is back there.
There he is. Never fails.
That was wonderful. The number of events that have improved in our city in the last 14 years is amazing, amazing, fun times for everyone, when they were pretty scarce at the start. Down to something more prosaic, accounting reports. Approval for payment of invoices submitted by Garan Lucio Miller, PC, for legal services in the amount of $15,248.33. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Yes.
Motion carry, thank you. Item nine bids, request from Taplin Group LLC for a contract extension of the 2024 sewer and catch basin and TV inspection project M774. Is this Kim, Director Maroney? I know that, given price hikes, anytime you can extend a contract, it's usually a good thing.
Yes, yes, and in this case, it's the same. We are allowed to do a 12-month extension to the contract, and Taplin Group, who we've worked with a lot in the past, has agreed to extend those prices into the next year. So we're asking to extend that bid for the additional 12 months.
Okay, so do we have a motion to extend the contract?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Crawford. Discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Motion carry. City Attorney, we now have a section that our city attorney is going to speak to. Courtney.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight, we have two appeals under the city's Freedom of Information Act appeals policy. Both of these appeals that were before you were denied for exceptions under the statute. Under the city's policy, these matters are before council, and council has the ability to reverse the disclosure denial, uphold the disclosure denial, or, under unusual circumstances, issue a notice for not more than 10 business days, the period during which city council shall respond to the written appeal. The city council shall not issue more than one notice of extension for a particular written appeal. The first matter, that is agenda item number 10A, is an appeal of a denial of a public record request under the Freedom of Information Act from Arimi Sachs of the Kickin' Handley PLC law firm. The initial request was denied due to the form of the request and not properly identifying the documents that were requested, and also, the request requested that the city create a new document, meaning a report, that compiled the list of water and sewage accounts, and since that report did not exist in the regular course of business, we were not required to produce that report under the Freedom of Information Act. So we're asking council tonight, reviewing agenda item number 10A, to either reverse the denial disclosure, uphold the denial disclosure, or reserve the ability to respond in writing within 10 days.
What is the will of council here?
I have a question.
Councilmember Solomon Redd.
What should we do?
The statute has very specific exceptions that do not require a city to disclose a public record in response to a Freedom of Information Act request. The exception that applies in this particular circumstance is the failure to identify specifically what the record is that the applicant is requesting. Also, the Freedom of Information Act does not require a municipality to create a new document in response to a Freedom of Information Act request.
So, okay, so you give us three options, which one should we, which one should we do? Should we give you all three, and then you can decide what to do?
I'm telling you that there is a statutory exception that does not require the city to respond in this circumstance, but it's up to council to make the final decision.
So she is suggesting we uphold?
Yeah, okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second? A second?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions?
Why does, why does this name sound so familiar? Sorry. Julie probably is a better question than me.
What is IWC?
IWC refers to the water and sewer accounts.
So they want both non-residential and residential accounts?
They want non-residential sewer accounts, and they want the city to prepare a report detailing the information from each account, and that particular report does not exist in the ordinary course of business. The city would have to create that report in order to comply with this request, which the city is not required to do under the statute.
And how difficult would it be to prepare that report?
We would have to meet with staff and determine if that is even possible, but I would caution council against setting a precedent.
Sounds like upholding the denial is...
Do you have any feeling as to why they're seeking these documents?
No, we have only been presented with the information that was contained within the request. I cannot speak to what the motivation was.
So this is a law firm?
Correct.
That's looking to do, pursue the city, yeah, okay. Here we go again.
And if we uphold the denial, where do they go from there? Do they go up to the circuit court to appeal?
There is a cause of action available under the Freedom of Information Act to pursue what they perceive to be a wrongful denial. The applicant also has the ability to go back and submit a new request that conforms with the statute.
Okay, do we need a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Any further questions? Are you comfortable to vote?
We're just voting on A right now?
Yeah, yeah.
And when we vote yes would be to uphold the denial, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So...
We have excellent lawyers, and this is why we have such excellent lawyers, so they can advise us accordingly.
All right. A roll call vote, please.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously, and now we're on 10B.
Council agenda item 10B is also an appeal of a denial under the Freedom of Information Act. The applicant has appealed the denial, or, I'm sorry, he has appealed the assessment of the total fee of $7.37 that was charged for approximately .25 hours of staff time expended in researching and locating the documentation requested. The applicant requested the city's accounting and financial reporting standard, operating procedures, and policy documents effective as of the date of the request. The particular request does not specify why the applicant believes that the $7.37 fee is excessive, so that is why the appeal is before you tonight.
Oh, gosh.
I'm happy to write him a check.
For, yeah, really, yeah, yeah.
Theoretically, if somebody were to just show up at the counter and pay $7.37, this goes away?
Theoretically, yes. We have the same objective standards for determining what is a reasonable fee under the Freedom of Information Act, and all applicants that are seeking documents are subject to the same policy.
I've submitted enough FOIA requests, enough public entities to know exactly what you mean.
So we need a motion to uphold the fee? Say it again.
You can bring the motion.
Bring the motion to accept, to uphold the fee of $7.37. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Edgar and Councilmember...
What's his name again?
Crawford, thank you, took me a while.
It was technically me.
Oh, was you?
Yeah.
Radnor, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Radnor.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Isn't there something like if, if you're asking for something ridiculous that, no? Okay. City Manager, Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So for 11A1 and 2, I would like our Deputy City Manager of Community Services, Adam Ozarzak, to join me at the podium, but before he gives his presentation, council members, this is a request first to approve the cooperative in our local agreements with the Berkeley School District for the Tyler Park enhancements. Adam, if you could detail the project and how we got here, it's been a long journey, but here we are.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungate. I'm going to first try to pull up some maps on the screen to kind of help guide the discussion here. Okay, we also have a printed packet in front of you as well. So how do we get here? In 2020, during the Elevate Oak Park initiative, you know, seeing what the community wanted, part of what's on the screen here is going to be 23% wanted walking connector paths. That was one of the things that community really wanted in, you know, throughout the city. Fast forward to March 2024, city council passed a resolution directing staff to work with the Berkeley School District to coordinate enhancement efforts at Tyler Park. That kind of leads us here to today. So before you is the inter-local agreement, as well as the cooperative agreement. This inter-local agreement establishes the design, construction, and long-term maintenance of the improvements at Tyler Park. In this inter-local agreement, each party is responsible for funding and managing construction on its respective property while jointly selecting contractors and coordinating project oversight through shared consultants, which will, through economies of scale, will save money over the long term. This project kind of got bumped up due to Berkeley Schools a couple years ago going out for bonds, and being that there are some laws recurring how bond funds can be spent. You'll kind of see on the map here, it kind of got to where we're at today. So this map shows phase one of a two-phase project for Tyler Park. As you can see on this, there's kind of that line throughout the middle of the park there. To the south of that is the Berkeley School District property. Through our coordination meetings with them, we decided the practice ball field that is currently on the city's property to be moved south onto the school district property. One of the reasons for that is for the construction of the new field, those will be paid for with bond dollars through the district. In the budget, we have identified $724,000 for this project, and for phase one, this inter-local agreement, basically, phase one of that is going to be grading, and as well as the path that you can see as well, and can kind of go to this. It's a concrete walking path as well as bathrooms. Bathrooms are on the southern part of the property, on the school district side. However, during coordination with them, they're about as far north as we could possibly move them due to two reasons. One, there are some building codes where bathrooms have to be a certain feet away from the softball field, as well as there are some storm and electric utilities north of the property that if we were to move any farther north, that would significantly increase the cost of moving those utilities to get it there. They're going to be pulling water and electric from their maintenance storage shed, so that's also why we selected the location of that bathroom there. So again, phase one is mostly grading issues, the construction of the eight-foot asphalt multipurpose path, and then phase two later on, as you can see... Then phase two later on, as you can see, kind of the brown stuff up the top will be play equipment, a pavilion on there as well. We also did a couple of months ago, put in a request with Representative Weiss's office for $2 million for park improvements at Tyler Park. We have yet to hear back if we were awarded for that, so pending the award of that, you know, grant that we submitted through Representative Weiss's office, or future budget allocations will go towards phase two of those improvements.
Adam, could I just chime in?
Yes.
So thank you for the explanation. It's very good and succinct. Couple clarifying items I wanted to mention. If we could go back to that now, it's off. But councilmembers, this, the, not that one, the other one, is from the, that one, is from the Smith Group study that we did during COVID, and this was, this was the study that we used as the impetus for all of the Elevate Oak Park projects. And I just wanted to further denote something Adam had mentioned, which is we did not initially target Tyler Park as one of our first projects, if you will, but for the fact that Berkeley School District wanted to turn the softball diamond at the south of the property into their marquee diamond, where they would have varsity softball events and things. So, and then, of course, as Adam had mentioned, having Berkeley Schools coordinate the project is obviously a cost savings to the city, a dramatic cost savings to the city. In addition to that, the bathroom facility, we do not have to pay to construct, or for the utilities, we're simply paying for the maintenance and the snow plowing, I believe, is all we're paying.
Correct.
And the grass clipping.
And there also is going to be bottle filling water stations at the restroom as well, so residents are able to fill up their water bottles if they're walking.
And that's primarily because they're drawing utilities from the maintenance building they just constructed to the east of this property, correct?
Correct, yes. That is the most efficient, the closest that they can get it, that saves costs.
I do want to ask Director Staceyak, if you could join me at the podium, I have a question for you actually too, but the, the other thing is that them, they're going to be paying for the second field to be relocated to the south portion, to their portion of the property, but what the agreement calls for is that with the exception of during the varsity softball season, where they have priority programming for that, we would be able to program activities at that field as well, even though it's on their property?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Then my next question for you, Lori, is Adam had just talked about some of the grading work that needed to be done. Can you speak to that a little bit more, maybe Adam, you too, but that's necessary? The property is currently flooding, I mean, I know Councilmember Edgar, I know, lives close by, the property is currently flooding. That will remediate the flooding issue, correct?
That will assist to remediate it, yes.
That will assist to remediate, okay.
Yeah. Not fully, but yes, it will help substantially.
Okay. So then in the next slide, when you see the StanTech version of this, okay, so this version of it, so you have this, now that field's been relocated to the Berkeley side of the property, and you have this field to work with, will we be programming things for that open field now that we have access to it and it's been graded?
Yes. For the most part, we'll program our youth soccer, our youth soccer program, adult soccer, and some of our soccer rentals, such as Socks, that pretty much accommodates kids, Berkeley, Oak Park, Ferndale, Royal Oak. They're always looking for space.
And do we, do we currently program that field over there?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yep.
Okay. And then the other thing I want to just, maybe, Adam, this is for you, but the, the walking path, councilmembers, and I wanted to go back to that other slide, I'm sorry, I'm toddling back and forth on you here, but one of the top priorities, actually, I believe it was the top priority in the statistically valid survey we did as part of this Smith Group study of our residents, was the walking paths in our parks. That was number one. Number two was an indoor swimming pool. So we get to accomplish that at a much reduced cost because the Berkeley School District is going to be paying for all of the pathway on their property, and the pathway will also, if we go to the next one, I'm sorry, I'm back to that one now, but you can see the interconnectivity now, it will take you around the diamonds, and then you see those areas where it will connect into the existing sidewalk so that you can walk all the way through the property uninhibited as well. And you can do that now to some extent, but this will be an improvement upon that. And then, and then just lastly, the pavilion and the playground, playscape areas?
Yes.
Will be done in a later phase as funding is, is made way for with the city. The other thing I wanted to point out, just lastly, is that when we did the statistically valid survey with Tyler Park specifically, the residents there, the number one priority was to maintain the sledding hill. That was number one on the list. And so in this proposal, we also do maintain that, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Julie Edgar?
So that diamond, the softball diamond that was on our property, is now going to be moved to the Berkeley School District property?
Correct.
So I guess what I'm hearing from residents in my neighborhood, all of whom have a lot of children, they're frustrated that there's no play equipment there. There isn't even, there's a bench that was, I don't know, it looks primitive, there's an old swing set. It really, it needs something almost immediately. The walking path, there is a walking path. You know, residents have lucky, we've got a walking path in Lincoln up to Talbot. It's already there, and that's nice, but I'm hearing, you know, people said, why do we need a diamond there? I have to agree. I walk through there all the time. I haven't seen anybody playing on that. There might be some kids like throwing around the ball, but I haven't seen anybody playing a formal game. And, you know, Berkeley Schools just got an $88 million bond for their facilities. They put up a maintenance shed, which doesn't do anything for us. I understand it's on their property, but it feels like we're just getting squeezed more and more. Tyler Park is this big. In my opinion, Berkeley Schools should pay for this because people in my neighborhood, if they didn't vote for this bond, they don't use Berkeley Schools for the most part. So I would say, you know, why are we picking up any cost at all? We should put play equipment down, but honestly, I think they should be paying for maintenance of restrooms, which they're going to use. Yes, we have some use in the property, but it's the school district. We've got two buildings there, three buildings there that are Berkeley Schools. And, you know, so residents, they're boxed in. Yes, the sledding hill's great, but we need something like now, and I'm not sure that a soccer field is even the best use either of that property. I would say let's put an ice rink, because we're losing an ice arena. Put an ice rink, and we don't have to regrade the property. It's already flooded.
Thank you, yes.
Seriously.
Could I, could I just say a few?
Thank you. City manager, Eric Tungate, to answer.
So first of all, I appreciate your input, councilmember. I think, you know, a couple of things. First, Berkeley Schools is paying for those things. So the ball diamond, they are paying for the full price of that, and the bathrooms, they're paying for the full price of that. They're also paying for all the utilities associated with the bathroom, which...
They will be maintaining the bathroom.
So these are always, but we will also have use, our residents will have use of that bathroom too, even though it's not ours. So it's a, I would say, more than fair compromise, especially financially speaking. As far as the, the field goes, that also, and I forget the terminology that was used in the statistically valid survey, I just read it before we came into the meeting tonight, but an open field to play in was another one of the top three priorities at that time of the residents surveyed for Tyler Park. So we were adhering with that, with that request. And then just lastly, as far as putting in new playground equipment, I mean, it's just, it's slated to be done, but it's just a matter of timing and funds. I could, I would, I think we could say that if nothing else, we could look at next year's budget to allocate the funds for the playground equipment and the pavilion over there.
And the pavilion, is it going to be similar to the pavilion in Shepherd Park, just open on all sides with a roof?
Well, I don't think we've, we haven't officially designed it. Just off the cuff, I would say we would probably want to maintain a similar aesthetic to not only the one in Shepherd Park, but also the one over at Rothstein that's in, well...
Victoria.
Victoria, I'm sorry, Victoria. And that's, I don't know if we have a picture of that, but that's the one the state is putting in. So I would think, Lori, maybe you have more intel on that than I do, but I would think we'd want to maintain that aesthetic.
Absolutely, yeah.
So what we're talking about in terms of our investment to do these improvements in Tyler Park?
For the, for the first phase, we have $724,000 budgeted for that. Of that, about $540,000 of that is physical construction costs, and the rest of that cost is engineering, site work, pre-project design for that.
But Adam, is it, is it safe to say that the vast majority of the 500 and so in cap, actual capital expenditure is for the grading and site work?
Correct. That is accurate.
What portion of that is the trip, is the pathway?
I don't have that specific number in front of me. I would have to get back to you on that.
Can you put the rendering back up, please? What it's going to look like?
May I ask a question?
Yes. Mayor Protem, Sean Whitehead?
Thank you. So are they getting, there's a basketball court there right now currently? Or half a basketball court?
There is, that's on the other side.
It's on the north.
Can you put it back out, please? I'm sorry, I want to think about it a little bit.
So that's not in the diagram, there's a basketball court?
Is there, is there a half? I don't know.
Now, the only difference from this one is that the ball field location there is kind of flipped.
So both are going to be facing that way?
Correct, yes. I believe that'd be northeast, I believe. Yeah, so that kind of, as you can kind of see on that one, both of them are kind of flipped, and then the city side for phase one, again, is just going to be open field, but majority of that's going to be grading, and there's significant grading that needs to be done. I don't have the specific drop or rise in elevation, but, you know, that's bringing in, you know, dirt, taking away dirt, as well as stormwater retention as well for that.
City manager, Eric Tungate?
So I just, I wanted to just address Mayor Protem's question about the basketball courts and stuff. So is it safe to say, and both, any of you can answer this, but is it safe to say that as far as the phase two amenities go, the playgrounds, the pavilion, courts, whatever, that that can all be vetted out as we get closer to implementation of that?
So, correct.
In other words, if we wanted to include basketball courts or whatever, we could certainly do that. That, that, the color rendering from Smith Group was not, that wasn't the final, that was just, you know, a first recommendation.
Correct.
I have a question, I have another, okay, I have two questions. The hill, the sledding hill?
Yes.
That's going to be untouched?
Correct.
For sure?
Correct. That has been identified through the Smith Group. The hill's not being touched.
Okay. In the rendering, there was like some red thing up there, what was that?
Yeah, we talked about that earlier. It, the, that's that playscape, what's that, not hardscape, but what's it called, the?
Like that rubbery?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of like that.
It doesn't do it justice, but it is maintained here in that corner.
How is that going to be there if the hill's there?
Well, it won't be there like it is in that rendering.
It'll just be on the other half?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, fine.
It would have to be, yeah.
Okay.
But the hill, the hill, again, was the top priority, was maintaining the sledding hill.
And then the second thing down, the green, that just that empty, it kind of looks like a, like a, like a wide capital D in green, that's the soccer field? And that's going to remain a soccer field?
Yeah, so, kind of, sorry, going back to the more up-to-date one, yes. It's just going to be, in phase one, it's kind of just a open...
Space.
Open, open play space.
Okay.
But we're open to, obviously, other suggestions at future times.
It's not, it's not just a soccer field, it's multipurpose, right?
Correct.
Yeah, people do all kinds of things there. And then one last question, as far as the baseball fields go?
Yes.
As it is right now, when kids from the neighborhood want to get together and go over there and just throw a ball around and do some batting practice, they can. Once this happens, are the fields going to be sealed up tight, that we're not going to be able to get in there?
Yeah, that practice field, yes.
Okay, both of them?
Yeah, as long as it's available, absolutely.
We'll be able to use it, or we won't?
It's going to be available if no one's using it, how it is now, anyone can just walk up and play baseball or whatever, lift the ball, whatever they like.
If I could add, and we don't have to pay for the brand-new field, practice field that can be used by our community.
Yeah, that's the best part.
That's good, because I'm not sure, you know, the residents and other people come and use the hill, and that's great, but, I mean, in terms of, you know, again, like the use of this whole park, I feel like, well, families who live in the area, they really don't have any place to go at this point. In the, in the summer and spring and fall, they have no place to go. And we've got this, you know, there's, nothing's been done with this park for years and years, but I like the idea of an open space here rather than a baseball field.
And the playscape?
Yeah.
There's going to be the playscape next to the hill?
Yeah, that's phase two, though, that's not going to happen.
Next year. We're talking about next year's funds.
Well, when city government says it'll happen in a year, it'll happen in a year.
We have a village, right? I mean, we have a village.
You can take it to the bank.
That's right.
Well, and I would just, again, go back to, keep in mind also that our community, our residents get access to a public bathroom, which was also one of the top priorities of when we did the survey for all of our parks, was to have the public bathrooms located. And in this case, we're going to get that without having to pay for it.
May I call Carolyn?
A separate, yes, thank you. A separate question, there's these freestanding bathrooms now. I don't know if there are a company that's putting these out, you know, with...
Yep.
A beautiful interior and very clean. Can you explain what that is and how is that funded? Like, this is just, you hire a private company?
I, Madam...
What are they called?
The Throne.
The Throne?
The Throne.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's just a freestanding building, and they maintain them, and you pay that contracted service.
So you're, you're not paying for the bathroom, you're paying for the maintenance of it?
The complete package, I believe.
You pay for the bathroom, and you pay for them to come and service the bathroom?
That's what I've heard.
And this is a private company called The Throne, which is what my dad used to call the bathroom all the time. I'm going to go sit on the throne. So just raised a smile. It sounds like there are good possibilities for the neighbors, especially if the half basketball court is still a possibility and...
Madam Mayor, could I just add one more thing? I'm sorry. So I think, councilmembers, as we get closer to the, the phase two part, so let's, let's assume for a moment that we begin this as part of our next budget cycle.
Yes.
We will do our best, obviously, because this, this will be, besides Shepherd Park, this will be our first park that we've redone. And remember, our plan is to redo all of them. But we will make a concerted effort to make sure that we are including new community input prior to the decisions that are being made about the new equipment and so forth.
Great.
So, well, we won't rest on the, you know, the 2021, 2022 information from the Smith Group. We'll actually go back out and, and get surveys and things.
I think the thing is that Councilwoman Agar is saying, a lot of people don't do surveys. A lot of people don't do surveys, so you kind of got to have your ear at the door, have your ear on the street, but yeah, the surveys only get to a certain demographic.
That's true. What if we vote to accept this agreement? When would it start? When will we start grading and doing the path?
So I know total completion for everything is currently scheduled November 1st, 2026. However, construction would, would start spring, spring of next year is when they would kind of start machinery on the ground, moving dirt, really picking up, so.
So through the summer, next summer?
Correct, yes.
So the construction would start in the spring, and the completion would be done by November?
November 1st is, is currently in the schedule for the project, is what we have. You know, obviously, hopefully it finishes sooner. I think that's a conservative, you know, finish date just because of tariffs and supply chain and all that stuff, so.
And I do think we should strongly consider a rink, like they have, I know Huntington once has one where you can skate in the summer, and you can skate in the winter.
And that's, that's a non-ice... And that's, that's a non-ice, it's like a plastic of some kind that you lay down, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kind of like downtown has. Director Stasiak, is that a possibility?
For the synthetic ice?
Yeah.
I think anything's possible if you want to pay for it.
Is that very?
I'm not exactly sure how much that would cost.
Okay.
But, we can certainly look into it.
That's great.
But, after this phase, we can talk more, as City Manager Tongate said, about what neighbors want.
Correct.
Just one more thing I wanted to add, just so, I want to clarify, we didn't just do statistically valid surveys, remember, councilmembers, we did, what, 30 community meetings, including several where we went to the park and met with the residents? So, it wasn't just that, I just, I don't want to give you the wrong impression, it was just the surveys that were based, and then it was a multitude of things that we, that we used. But, we certainly can revisit that, and should, to get a refreshed version of what people want.
And maybe pass flyers before the, the event, so that people in the neighborhood get notice of, this is your chance to tell us what you want. We did a great job at that, because each park had its own special meeting.
Yes.
With the neighbors around that park.
Right, so, I'm hearing from neighbors, they're saying, what's happening? I thought you guys were gonna actually put some play equipment in Tyler Park, that's what we want, we want shade.
Yeah.
And.
I am the shade queen. Well, that's Berkeley's, Berkeley's turf.
Now, now it's Berkeley's turf.
It's always been.
Well.
It belongs.
We got, the agreement says it's on our side, the Tyler Park side.
That, can I, just to clarify again, the interlocal does, it's very specific about the usage of that field, it doesn't prohibit us from the use of that field, except for the varsity softball season, and I think that's what a two-month season?
April to June, April to June, as well as middle school baseball practice.
So, our community, and Lori will be programming games and things at that field, so we will have full use of it, but not have to pay for it, because it's on their side of the fence, if you will.
So, the, you know, we keep asking, the color drawing, so, it looks like part of the field is, can have, most of the field's in Tyler Park, right?
Currently, most of the second field is, yes.
Yes, right.
Yes.
And that, it will remain that way, correct?
No.
It will not, that field will move down below the property line. Yeah.
But, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I just don't know why we would build a field for Berkeley Schools.
We're, we're not building a field for Berkeley Schools.
We're just letting them do it.
We're just, we're just, from April to June, they get the diamond.
It, it's on their property, and they're paying for it, though, too, remember?
Well, now, but.
Yeah.
So, this is old, what we're looking at is old?
It is.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's from the Smith Group, right.
Through the master plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that's up right now is the rendering that we're looking at through Berkeley Schools. And just keep in mind, what Adam just said, is the high school and middle school will be using that, that secondary practice field, April through June, or early June, I should say, from the hours of four to six. And then, the community have, will have it after 6:00 PM.
Now, will our kickball players still be using these fields?
Youth soccer, youth baseball, softball, adult kickball, adult softball, all of them. Because, keep in mind, we do not have Victoria for a couple more years.
I did think of that. And will we put the diamond back in Victoria Park?
Yes, that, that diamond that was there will remain.
Michigan permitting.
Thank you.
I will say this, I grew up playing on these fields, I really did. I grew up two blocks away, and now I live also two blocks away, I live a block away from where I grew up. I literally spent the entire summer on these fields. That's where my father and his friends used to have their softball games, and then eventually I was old enough to play with them, that's where Little League used to play, we used to play there all the time. I have tons of memories of playing on these fields. And it breaks my heart when I walk by them now, and I see the fields in the, in the, in the shape that they're in. So, this is actually really exciting, and I'll say one more thing, because it's confession time. I actually enjoy watching girls' softball. I don't know why or how, but it's, 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 it's cra, they fire the ball on their hand from 43 feet away, you wouldn't have any time to see it.
Why they call it fast pitch?
And somehow they hit it. I don't think I could hit that, I was able to hit a 90 mile an hour fastball, I don't think I could hit these pitches. The rise ball, what's a rise ball? Whatever it is, they're throwing it and they're hitting it. I plan on actually walking over and watching some of these games, so I'm excited about this, I really am.
Girls can play sports, too.
Oh, yeah, well, they'd embarrass me if I never tried.
Councilmember, I want to just, I don't want to steal Berkeley Schools' thunder, but part of the advantage to them, on the, the larger field, the very south of the property, is, and this is one of the reasons why they approached us in the first place, was that they now have a marquee, will have a marquee place to have varsity softball that they don't currently have. And this will be one of a kind for this area.
Yeah, it's gonna be exciting.
Do I have this straight, that in the summer, after the varsity is done, that anyone in the community can use this?
Not that field, but the second field.
The second field.
Yes, the varsity field will not be accessible to the public. That will be exclusively for the school district.
And that will be by permit only for special occasions.
Yeah.
If you had an All-Star game, for instance.
That's gonna be the 250 one? And then, the one above it is gonna be the 225 one?
The bigger field, yes.
I believe it's 195, the softball, or the softball field, the home plate to the fence, I think is about as far as they could stretch it.
195 on the varsity field?
For the softball, yeah, just because of the space limitations, and I believe the state is 185 to 220, I believe.
So, it's a hitters' park, in other words.
It's a hitters' park. Where they can catch up to these drop balls that they throw.
Now, are they gonna do a scoreboard, since it's the, will be the premier diamond?
Oh, that would be cool.
Lights?
Yes.
Oh, there's gonna be lights?
I'm not, so, there is gonna be a scoreboard, and there are discussing opportunities to kind of have advertisements on top or the bottom of the scoreboard. However, lights, I don't, I gotta double check, follow up on that, I don't think so.
I thought they were gonna do lights, but, yeah, we'd have to get back to you on that.
They could do lights, it's their property, though, they could put lights there anywhere, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I know it, I know it.
I think, I think that we don't have a, a motion. We need a motion to approve a cooperative interlocal agreement with the Berkeley School District for Tyler Park enhancements.
I'll second it.
That's Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead and Member Radner. Discussion or questions? We've had quite a bit of discussion, ready for a roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And more to come, more community input, and more improvements to the park.
Absolutely. 11-82, Adam, if you could take this one, too, so, with what we just did, now, here we are, having to move to the next step.
Yes, so, I guess, Phase Two, or Step Two, I guess, in the process now, is professional service agreements. Our professional service agreement that we're gonna go into tonight is with StanTech Architecture. Again, very similar model to kind of how we're doing with the Event Hub. And just for clarification, StanTech, what we're going into, services, the StanTech team will provide project management and coordination, site design, landscape architecture and engineering services, to develop, design, and construct documents to implement the scope of work that we'll mention here shortly. And again, as mentioned, in the, in the, sorry, in the interlocal agreement, majority of that work is going to be site and drainage work, stormwater management, as well as the installation of an eight-foot asphalt walking path. So, that's kind of the next step, is getting to that agreement with that professional services company, to kind of assist us in those phases of the project, as you well.
Is, is this a agreement, something that we're sharing with Berkeley?
No, so, as mentioned previously, be, kind of how, we are working together, however, the school district is paying for everything on their side, and we are paying for everything on our side. So, again, kind of how the bond funds are, and with our city purchasing policies, yes, we are working together, but administratively, everything is, is separate. So, that's why we have to go into separate agreements with StanTech, and again, following all of our purchasing procedures, as well as, you know, liability insurance and all of those things. So, we'll be, like I said, this agreement is basically, as ourselves getting into that agreement with them.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, yes.
So, just to clarify, Adam, StanTech is also, for professional services, is also being used by the school district.
Correct, yes.
But, we have to have legal separate agreements because of the bonded debt aspect of this, primarily with the school district.
Correct.
But, what I wanted to point out was that there is, while not, we're not able to show it, there is a coordination of effort, in the sense that the Berkeley School District is out coordinating the vendors that we're working with, because they are serving as the project lead on the project, which represents, again, can't substantiate it right now, but represents a cost savings to us as well.
Correct, yes, economy's a skill, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a request to approve professional services agreement with Stan, StanTech for Tyler Park enhancements. We need a motion to approve.
Second.
So, that was Edgar, and Radner was second, yes. Discussion, questions? Ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes, roll call, please.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
These are exciting times, councilmembers.
Thank you.
Okay, 11-B1, our manager of authorities, Michelle Bishop, if you could come join me at the podium, please.
Good evening, again. I am here to present two facade grant requests. The first one is for the Collab of Beauty at 22115 Coolidge Highway. Everything is in your packet, unfortunately, I don't have anything on the screens tonight. The business owners are repairing or painting their brick storefront, and then they're gonna add new planters with custom flower designs and a new park bench. The business has met all the requirements for the grant, and the CIA board has given their approval. We're asking the city council to approve the matching grant, the amount not to exceed $2,400, and it is budgeted in the CIA funds.
Okay, we need first a motion to approve the OPCIA facade grant for Collab of Beauty.
So moved.
Sorry.
Edgar and Radner, thank you. Discussion or questions? This is, how did they come up with that amount?
It's based on, they, every facade grant has to give us two quotes for every single vendor that they're going to use. So, they had quotes for the repair and repainting, they had a floral design quote, and they had quotes for benches. So, and then, we do up to 50% of the grant, up to $5,000.
Got it, okay. Any questions about this? It looks, it looks like a beautiful improvement.
The whole plaza, it's, it's starting to, you know, one after another, they're all applying for a facade grant, so that whole plaza is gonna look really nice when they're done.
It's a curb appeal.
Exactly.
What do they do, Collab of Beauty?
They do eyebrow shaping, waxing, eyelashes, sorry, it's not my, my forte, but, you know, they do beauty services, so, yeah.
Further questions? Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Madam McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Thank you. The second facade grant request is for a brand-new business that is, they're in the process of opening here in Oak Park, it's called Excelsior Floral Studio. They are located at 8960 West Nine Mile, it's that Rosewood Plaza where Pears Food is at. They are asking for a grant to install a new sign. They've met all of our approvals for the grant, and the CIA board has given their approval. We're asking the city council to approve the matching grant, the amount not to exceed $2,950, and it's budgeted in the CIA funds.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this facade grant?
So moved.
Second.
We've got Crawford making the motion, and Edgar second. Thank you. Discussion, questions?
I'm very excited about these changes, these improvements.
Oh, my.
Paint, a new sign, it goes a long way.
Lighted sign.
Spitting it up. Kind of raises the, the bar.
Yep.
It's wonderful, so, you've been talking these up, is that how word gets around?
I have been. And we have a new mural coming soon, so stay tuned. I'm super excited about that one, so.
Is that the one on the hardware store?
Oh, no, new one.
A new one. She is as busy as a long-tailed cat in a room full of rocking chairs. Any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, Michelle, 11-B3.
So, as most of you know, our Cruise and Groove, our second annual Cruise and Groove is coming up, we're tying into the whole Woodward Dream Cruise hoopla that happens in this area. It's on August 14th, and due to the 11-mile Kingston parking lot renovations, we're gonna have to adjust our, our event area a little bit. So, we've already submitted a special event permit, we would like to amend that to close down Gardner for that day, so we can set up the stage and have the viewing area there, and the cars will be on each side of the flanking parking lots. So, we're just asking that you approve that amendment.
Okay, we need a motion to amend Cruise and Groove event by closing Gardner Street from 11 to Kingston for the one day, August 14th. Their motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
So, we've got Edgar and Whitehead?
Crawford.
Any, Crawford, thank you. I have a thing with your name, good girl, doggone. It sounds like it's gonna be great.
It was a really great event last year.
It was very good last year.
Yeah, and we already have more momentum this year, so.
Do we have a different yodeler, by any chance?
That was for Oktoberfest.
Oh.
So, this is the car event, so we've got a great band, the band that played last year's returning.
And the band was fun.
Yeah.
They really involved everyone, that was great. So, we can vote on this one?
Voice vote is fine on this.
I vote, all those in favor to close Gardner for the one day, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, here's a fresh face we don't see as often, Public Safety Director Steve Cooper, 11-C1, there he is.
Holy applause. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager Tongate, coming before[1746.81] Coming before you with traffic control order number 160, section 1.40. Due to the 11-mile road construction project, which will take place from July 28, 2025 through November 13, 2025, and to allow for intermittent deliveries to the various businesses in the city of Oak Park during this time, we are requesting a temporary traffic control order be approved to close the far-south lane eastbound on 11-mile road to through traffic between Tyler and Gardner. This lane closure will be designated for vehicles making deliveries to the affected businesses and not used for purposes such as long-term parking, et cetera. Properies signage will be erected in this area by the Department of Public Works and I'm coming before city council asking you to approve the above traffic control order number 160, section 1.4.
I have a question. I thought some of the information I got said that it was going to start construction the 21st today.
Now, the information that I have is saying July 20, 28.
It's today?
Yeah, we were about, what are we, 21st today, so.
So then we have to change this just to the 21st? Because I've seen building equipment, yes. Director Maroni will clarify?
Yes, they did start construction today with removals. However, we're only going to do the lane closure for the portion where they're replacing the alleyway, which will not begin till the dates that Director Cooper has given you.
Got it, okay, all right. So we need a motion, correct? Motion to approve this temporary traffic controller order to close one lane eastbound 11-mile road, starting July 28th next week through November 13th. It's their motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Edgar and Radner, thank you. Discussion or questions? Are people going to be able to go eastbound on 11-mile road?
Yes.
Yes, because there are two lanes?
Correct.
Got it, okay, one of the two lanes will be closed.
The far-south lane will be closed to through traffic.
Far-south lane being closed to traffic, okay, got it. But we will still be able to travel through. It's, it's an adventure driving these days.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, we get complaints about people not being able to get places in a hurry. It's usually the opposite. We're getting complaints about people flying all over the city in a hurry and not slowing down, so it's a welcome change, if such a thing.
Can't win, right?
Yeah, we figured out how to hack the system, just have tons and tons of construction all the time. There you go.
Ed, we did get a motion, correct? Yes, okay. Discussion or questions about the lane closure? And do you need a roll call, do you need a voice, voice vote? All those in favor of closing one lane of the two eastbound 11-mile lanes, July 28th to November 13th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carried unanimously?
Thank you, Director Cooper. I would like to call up Deputy City Manager of Municipal Services and the Department of Public Works, Dave DeCosta, for D11D1, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungate. As you know, last month, the Department of Public Works was awarded a grant to the Michigan DNR. As part of this grant, we have tackled a tree inventory for all the street trees in the entire city and we have been working with Davy Resource Group on developing a professional service, services proposal for this work. In front of you tonight is that proposal. The Davy proposal does fall under the professional services exemption to sealed bidding requirements in section 2-379. With the approval of the recent budget amendment, funding is available in the local, in local and major streets funds. It's recommended that city council approve the Davy Resource Group contract for a total amount of $64,000 upon review of the city attorney's office. It is further recommend the city, allow the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Okay, do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Crawford, thank you.
There you go.
One out of three, it ain't bad.
Second.
And a second. Edgar, thank you. Is this a part of a grant or are we going to get reimbursed for this?
Yeah, fully reimbursable grant, correct.
Fully, so this, we're putting out $64,000 and somebody is going to pay us $64,000 back?
Correct.
So this is a free B. Terrific, that sounds great. And I just talked to a neighbor who was concerned about the state of her elderly trees on the corner and dead branches and cracking in the, in the wood itself, thinking that that would weaken the branch. So that's part of what's going to be carefully evaluated.
Correct.
The size of the tree, the age of the tree, the condition of the tree, what needs to be done to the tree, the danger presented by the tree, and everything will be computerized.
Yep, and we'll all have in our GIS system as well.
And on every tree in the city. So a lot of complaints are about trees and this is going to give us the condition of every tree.
Correct.
This is great. Okay. Well, we need a motion to award this contract to Davy Resource Group for the amount of $64,000, which we will be getting back.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, thank you. Discussion or questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Dave, if you could stay there, for the Elevate Oak Park update, councilmembers, I did give a brief update at the last meeting. I did want to ask Dave to give a brief update on the progress that's being made next door, especially, but not only next door, at the Shepherd Park Pavilion location as well. We've, we've seen, I know the footings have been poured, but I was hoping you'd give a little bit more of an update on what's next.
Yeah, thank you. You may have noticed in the consent agenda this evening was our first payment to Frank Reewald, our construction manager, so we have made that first payment. We are working through weekly meetings. We have a couple of change orders on tap for our next meeting, but when it comes to construction, City Manager is correct, we have now poured footings for the Event Hub structure as well as the band shell. We're working through some grading issues on the north part of the site, which has slowed some of the progress on the, on the band shell portion. We may actually raise the stage up a little bit, so we don't want to preemptively pour some of those walls without having, you know, some final adjustment decisions not made yet. The burnished block for the Event Hub, which is like a polished, exposed aggregate block that we decided for that building, we found out last week that it has been delayed. So that block construction was actually supposed to start today. Unfortunately, we're a couple of weeks delayed on that, but the contractor is committing to, by mid-August, starting that burnished block install. There is some block in the interior portion of the Event Hub that can't start early, but obviously mobilization, see, they don't want to come on site, leave a couple of weeks later. So the block construction will be starting in the next couple of weeks. After that, you'll start seeing the steel go up. But like I said, as of right now, the footings are in, underground utilities are mostly in, we've gotten the utilities, the old utilities out of the site, so things are progressing. You're not going to see a lot going on probably this week, but things are progressing on schedule, so that's good for the Event Hub. When it comes to Oak Park Woods at Shepherd Park, the county is progressing out there as well. We finally got our demolition permit settled and the, okay to proceed through TTE, so the old warming station and restrooms are now gone. They've been demolished, the footings have been removed. The new footings for the new warming kitchen and storage area have been poured. They're also working on the footings for the new restrooms. The mayor mentioned some new styles of restrooms. We did the pre-cast near Shelter 2. This project was supposed to have pre-cast restrooms. There's a huge lead time for those, similar to what we experienced, so they are going to actually build those with block and I think wood construction. So they're finalizing the changes for that, but they're looking to pour those footings here soon. But that product is progressing well. A lot of that product is the amenities, so the large playscapes, the rolling hills, the swings, all that. So that's what's the big part of that project that will come much later this year.
That's what those piles of dirt are for?
Yeah.
So Dave, one other thing, and I'm not sure that I'm supposed to be sharing this yet, but the county informed us that they do have funding for the Phase 2 portion of the Shepherd Park project, and that's funding to happen almost instantaneously after this first phase, correct?
Yeah, at our last, our last monthly meeting, the council, the county did acknowledge that they have approved, I believe it's gone through the board approval as well, Phase 2 construction funding. So you may remember, this is primarily near Shelter 1. Phase 2 is going to be moreover by Shelter 2, the renovation of Shelter 2, the open area, I believe there's a, there's a nature path through the woods. That funding has been approved. Like I said, don't quote me on if the board has approved it yet, but they have, they are proceeding with design of that section, and I believe the plan is to, when they're done with Phase 1, move right onto Phase 2 of Shepherd Park.
Yeah, so councilmembers, I don't know if you remember the renderings from that Phase 2 that we had a while back, but that, that did include some, that trail through the woods being redone, the, the shelter itself, this is by the, that's Shelter 2 or 1?
Shelter 2, yes.
That's Shelter 2, by the bathrooms over there, but that's a massive win for us, so I'm very excited to say that.
It's all good news.
Mayor, may I just ask one question?
Yes, Councilmember Edgar.
What, what are they going to do with the trail that runs through there? How are they going to upgrade it?
The trail that runs through the, like the, around, I think they're just going to rip it out and put a new asphalt trail in. If you've been back there now, it is starting to fall apart a little bit. We've had some drainage issues back there, so they're going to go back, address some of the drainage issues and re-pour a new trail. They may even add another trail throughout there. We don't have the final plans yet, the final design, but that was the intention in the design phase.
Also, in that, in that rendering, and that's not, certainly not a final document, but in that rendering we showed some time ago now, there were other features along the trail. I think there were some seating features, if I'm not mistaken.
Some what features?
Seating.
Seating.
Yeah.
Neat.
I wish we had that, we could put it.
A member of the Recreation Commission asked me, like, what are the approximate end dates, end dates for the park and for the hub?
So the hub we're working on right now, we are aggressively pushing for a summer 2026 opening for the Event Hub. As long as we get the building enclosed by winter, we can continue work inside with drywall paint, all the, all the interior finishes that we need to do with the building closed up.
Open for next summer?
That's the plan for the Event Hub. There's a lot of final work that needs to happen out there, so again, that's tentative. A lot of landscaping, tree planting, concrete pouring, that if it doesn't happen this year, it needs to happen as soon as spring starts. So again, an aggressive schedule would have us opening sometime next summer for the Event Hub. For Oak Park Woods, the intention was to work all the way through this year. I think they've realized some of the delays with some of the equipment they're going to have. I believe Oak Park Woods will go slightly into next spring. It was supposed to end this winter, but I think it'll go slightly into next spring.
Wow, wow. So Oak Park Woods would be open to play next summer?
Absolutely.
That's our hope.
Yes, it should be, 100%, really springtime it should be.
Wow, wow, okay. Amazing.
Dave has, Dave has said that he will do everything that he can.
That is true.
Make sure that we have the next state of the city at the Event Hub.
The next state of the city will be next November, so I guarantee.
Be aggressive, you can do it.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the City Manager report for this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Tungate, for bringing us good news. Lord, there is a lot of good news in Oak Park, honestly. Call to the audience. Mayor Pro Tem White?
Thank you, Mayor. Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments and the city of Oak Park does not by permitting such remarks support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. Any person while being heard at a city council meeting may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to be germane to the business of the city, vulgarity, or personal attacks on persons or institutions. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Thank you. Do we have some cards? Our city clerk?
I do, Madam Mayor. First I have Tanisha Turner.
And with her, she brings one of the Juneteenth SA winners.
Good evening, my name is Tanisha Turner. I wanted my son to come because he has something to say.
Hello, my name is Max Turner. I am one of the Juneteenth Award recipients and I, and I just wanted to thank the Oak Park Committee for choosing me as one of their recipients for the award.
Thank you so much. He was really excited and it was great to have his, his efforts being acknowledged. And he made the news, thanks to Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you so much. So my name is Tanisha Turner and this is my husband, Kari Turner. We live on the same block as my mom, Chloe Fowler, on Beverly Street. And we're here to kind of talk about what are the plans for 9 Mile west of Coolidge. We're having some concerns and issues with litter, specifically by the bus stops, there is a lot of transient and public foot traffic and we're having some concerns around that and specifically around the commercial districts. So where we live, we butt up right, right up against the commercial district, so we're constantly picking up litter, consistently and constantly picking up litter. So we just kind of wanted to find out, what are some of the plans, what's going to be happening with 9 Mile west of Coolidge and also the corridor on Greenfield north of 9 Mile? And I'm sorry, did you want to add anything?
I don't wonder. I think somebody ought to talk about.
Good evening, Council Mayor. We, we have always been, well, since it occurred, we've been, we've been encouraged by the development that's taken place on 9 Mile east of Coolidge and also motivated and inspired. We'd love to see some of that development take place west of, of Coolidge and in our area, particularly on, on our block at the southeast corner of 9 Mile and Beverly. We get a lot of traffic and as much as we love the business owners, the nature of the businesses attract a lot of traffic. We have the jewelry store to the, to the north, the pizzeria, Papa's, just right at the corner of our street, and then just across the street, the smoke shop. That causes a lot of traffic that speeds north and south on our block and we have children that play, families and things like that. And the city has always been really responsive, but we're just, you know, continually, continuously concerned about peace, safety, and cleanliness in that block.
What is the name of your street again?
Beverly.
Beverly. I wonder, our police chief is here and I wonder if perhaps using that speed trailer that we have, if you could speak to him about getting on the list for the speed trailer, that's one thing. City Manager Eric Tungay.
Thank you for your concern and for your input. I am going to have you speak with Director Kim Maroni after the meeting. We're not supposed to give this information right now, but there are plans, I just want you to know that, and, and it is really just a matter of getting additional funding in place, but Kim will detail that for me.
Great, thank you. One of the things though, we would like to see addressed is the litter. So right on Greenfield, there's bus stops, there's some, some bus stops don't have trashcans and others do and there's just, there's a lot of litter in those areas.
So that's one thing that I will be addressing on your behalf. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you very much.
Don Jones?
Always regret giving me the microphones. My name is Donald Jones, I'm a loved one, West Hampton, and now own the house that I live in, so that's a six-figure investment in the city of Oak Park, and it's joyous to see the rule of law continuing here. Unfortunately, we can't rely on that for the entire country, so go to www.no kings.org. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? That's, anyone else motivated to speak? I just, at his age, I would have done anything to avoid getting up and speaking in front of people, so I'm so proud of him for his courage. Good for you. First, I have a sad announcement. Wishing condolences to friends, neighbors, members of the formerly-named Fatima Church that is now our mother of perpetual health, and beloved family of Emil Duplessis, to his wonderful children and his beautiful granddaughter Mackenzie. Thursday night, he went to be with his dear wife, Jean. We appreciate his generous service to the city of Oak Park. He was the commit, the epitome of a community leader, gracious demeanor, a fine gentleman of unassailable integrity, served on the zoning board for 15 years, on the Brownfield Authority, on the IDC, and then served a term on city council. May his memory be a blessing for all who know and cared for him. Funeral arrangements are being made and there will be a formal recognition at the next council meeting. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Sean Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to highlight again our Juneteenth Super
I just want to highlight again our Juneteenth superstar who's in the crowd. You did a great job, and you were even more impressive on the news, so just keep going. And you're a great public speaker, and that was a lot of people in the room, too, so to be doing that at that young of age, you're on a really high trajectory, so just keep going, and that's all I got tonight, thank you.
Amen, that's great. Councilmember Radner.
Good night, everybody.
Councilmember Edgar.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, and congratulations on your win. I just wanted to mention that we had two very successful events yesterday. We had the Dog Day Afternoon, the second annual event in Oak Park and Bark. It was very well attended, we had about twice the number of vendors this year as last year. It was just so, so much fun. I wanted to mention that Stephanie Crawford, Councilwoman Crawford's dog Frankie, won an award in the dog contest for sunniest personality. Truly a sunny dog. Anyway, we had a couple of rescue organizations there, and seven dogs were adopted out, which is pretty incredible.
That is amazing.
They were just adorable. And if I had a picture of Director Stasiak holding one of these pups, I would have given it to Benny to put up tonight, because it's so cute. Anyway, and one adoption's pending, so it was successful for rescues as well. Sometimes rescues don't love coming because people don't really adopt, and it's, it takes a lot to bring dogs out to these events. So, they were successful. We had a woman there who makes jewelry in the shape of dog biscuits and dogs, and she donated the proceeds from her sales yesterday to three rescues, which was very nice. So it was, overall, a very successful event. We also had an adult pool party, which was really fun, not well-attended. We might have started too late with the planning of it, but it was a beautiful night, we had wonderful food, we had a DJ, our own Terry McQueen, who is a member of the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, she did it free of charge, and she's really good. So it was just a wonderful event, and I just wanted to mention again that our concerts in the parks start Wednesday evening, right over there, behind the community center, at 7:00. So hope to see everybody there, thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Crawford.
And just wanted to give kudos, not because Frank won an award, not a prize, but the dog event was beautiful, you did a great job. And also with the Flamingo Fiesta Party, I enjoyed both events, so a lot of great events happening in Oak Park, love for the public to come out and be a part of it. And again, until we meet again, everyone be safe and enjoy your summer.
Lovely, lovely. We will now, we need a motion pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Meetings Act to convene a closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege, communication, and pending litigation.
Second.
Okay. Do you need a roll call?
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.